On December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, I'll call this Lacey City Council Meeting to Order. We have Councilmember Dunning, who's attending remotely, but all other council is present. And if you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, infinite, and eternal.
I also want to acknowledge that we, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe. With that, can I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda and consent agenda IMs?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion passes unanimously. And next up on our approved agenda is, under public recognitions and presentations, the Happy holidays.
Holidays. Hello, council. I'm Eliana Allen, and I'm here representing Pope John Paul II High School. So in the past month and a half or so, we've been quite busy. I mentioned last time that we were doing a chili challenge for All Kids Win. We collected chili cans and fulfilling my promise, the seniors won. So, and the school total ended up with far over a thousand cans, which for a school with a population around a hundred, that's pretty good, in my opinion anyways. We also had a community Thanksgiving potluck with an extended lunch, so we could all just kind of come together and celebrate just kind of our community and what we're thankful for. Our school suicide alertness program called the Catholic Lifesavers Corps also held a safe talk event for the school. This happens a couple of times a year, and it's really important. It's a program that not many schools have, and it's specifically designed for Catholic schools, so we're very proud of it. Our school accreditation was also completed with high regards from the accreditation body, and that happens through the archdiocese rather than the normal system. In a more fun tone, we also had a class limp sync battle with music videos for favorites such as "All I Want for Christmas Is You" and "You Belong With Me." And I think that the seniors did the best job with "All I Want for Christmas Is You." Our choir and jazz band had their Christmas concert last week, and many people in attendance said that it was the best one yet. Our knowledgeable robotics and stellar explorers teams and stellar explorers is an astronomics and engineering group, all have been doing very well in their events, going into final rounds of competition and just, you know, placing high and doing good for us. And then finally, our day of service is on Friday. It's a tradition where every single student, even alumni, come back so liberately for this event, where we all get divvied up and go to different locations to do two hours of service work in our community for places like Kukua, the Salvation Army, All Kids Win, the Catholic Community Services, the Thurston County Food Bank, and much more. Thank you and happy holidays.
And thank you for that service.
Good evening, council. My name is Zuri Ramirez, and I'm the youth mayor, and I will be representing North Thurston High School tonight. First of all, our school-wide food drive is coming to an end tomorrow. We had the same goal that Pope John Paul had, a thousand items. So we'll see if we'll match it tomorrow, and all the donations will go to support the Thurston County Food Bank and All Kids Win. On Friday, December sixth, the gymnastics team had their first meet of the season against Emerald Ridge, Sumner, and Rogers High School. And they recently won first place at a meet against Olympia, Capital, and Puyallup. Auditions for the winter play production, Radium Girls, will be held tomorrow. If you haven't heard of it, it's a play about women who painted watches and other equipment with radium-laced paint in the nineteen twenties and the effects that had on them. Lastly, this morning, while I was in class, we were visited by Big Future, a company owned by College Board, to announce that one of my classmates had won a forty thousand dollar scholarship. And I'm just very proud to say that one of our students at North Thurston High School won the scholarship, especially someone I know closely and have known for a long time, because I know they'll make great use out of that money. That's everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you pass along our congratulations as well?
Good afternoon, council. I'm Al Hajj, and I'm a senior attending of a ridge. I'm happy to share some updates on recent events happening at our school. The basketball season is in full swing, and our teams are off to a decent start. The girls' basketball team currently holds fourth place in the standings, and the boys won yesterday against Lakes High School. Our fall play, A Midsummer Night's Dream, was a tremendous success thanks to the actors, crew, and staff. The production ran for three nights and concluded on December seventh to an enthusiastic audience. Our school also recently demonstrated its commitment to the community by hosting a canned food drive in support of All Kids Win, a nonprofit organization dedicated to fighting hunger and housing insecurity. The generosity of our students and staff are sure to make a meaningful impact. Lastly, construction on our campus is progressing well, with the new commons area on track open after winter break. We're all looking forward to enjoying this upgraded space in the new year. Thank you for your time and happy holidays.
Thank you. Happy holidays. We look forward to seeing that new space, too.
Good evening, council. I'm Luca Frilic, and I'm representing the homeschool community. Homeschool community has been active with field trips and activities finishing up for the holidays. Semester finals are also in progress, so I've been kept very busy. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Good evening. I'm Arien, and I'm representing Timberline. Recently, we just finished our winter warmth event, where the school comes together to make blankets to give out to the homeless, and distribution starts Thursday night. BSU's starting Kwanzaa celebration, and AAPI and BSU are having a collective potluck tomorrow. FBLA started their live auction for club funding, and dancing, boys wrestling, and swimming have started competing. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Good evening, council. My name is Karen, and I'm a junior at Summit Virtual Academy. We actually haven't had much going on, but last month we started our second quarter, so, you know, new classes and everything like that. But now we're getting used to it, because we've been in there for a few weeks now. Last month, we also had our science night, so that's just a bunch of science-themed art projects. Once or twice a month, we've been having movie nights, and we have one coming up this Friday. It's a holiday-themed one. And then we also had a bingo night with cider donuts and cocoa. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Good evening, city council. My name's Lydia Neat, and I'm the representative tonight for Northwest Christian High School. Our basketball team has been hard at work with all their games. Our knowledgeable team, they had a meet last week, and they did very good. They placed second place. Our speech and debate team had the most recent meet last Saturday. It's something, this time around, we hosted it, and we also performed very well on that as well. Our National Honor Society is currently hard at work with their current service project, which is, we're very proud of them. They've worked very hard on this one. In a fun tone, our school is wrapping up for winter break, which tomorrow is the last day of that. We've been working on our annual hallway decorating contest, and that finally ended today. It was a lot of stress on our hand, and we're gonna get the judging results tomorrow, which is very exciting. And then tomorrow is our Christmas carnival, which is just like a standoff. It's a great way to end off the year. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Good evening, council. I'm Sophia. I'm the W Mayor of the Lacey Youth Council. At our last meeting, we went over the comprehensive survey, where we gave feedback on each question. And at this meeting, we learned about city budget and went through our own experimental budget with Youthville mimicking the Grinch, and we really learned how hard it is to budget. Yeah.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much, and we'll see you next year. Love our youth council. So next up on our approved agenda is public comment, and we did have one person signed up, Jim. And you're representing the Park Foundation. Can you please introduce yourself, and you have three minutes?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jim Camber, representing the Park Foundation of Thurston County. We're so honored to partner with the City of Lacey and work closely with Jen and Shannon and the staff. It's just been a great relationship, but we're here tonight because you're gonna take a look later on in your agenda at the recommendations of the work group on the park, how to move forward with your parks. And we're very enthusiastic about working together with the council and the staff to move that forward. Of course, we work also with the cities of Lacey and Tumwater. Both of them have a Metropolitan Park District, and I believe that that's the recommendation. And we see a lot of success and a lot of positives for those two cities with that opportunity. So we're looking forward to the opportunity to work with you and the staff on this, and we just wanted to say nice work to that work group, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Also want to thank the Park Foundation for being the fiduciary for the Lacey Community Foundation. I really, really appreciate that as we're getting that group off the ground. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? Seeing none, then we'll go on to our next agenda IM, which is under ordinances. The first one's the sixteen sixty-nine amendments to the Development Guidelines and Public Work
Coming. There we go. Good evening. Before you tonight, is ordinance sixteen sixty-nine, which amends Chapter One of the Development Guidelines and Public Work Standards Manual. Chapter one is the Development Permit and Procedures Chapter of the manual. The purpose of the amendments are to comply with Senate Bill fifty-two ninety, which was passed by the state legislature in two thousand and twenty-three. This bill amended the Growth Management Act, specifically Section thirty-six seventy-B, which is the Local Project Review Act, and the intent of which was to streamline and improve local permit review processes and outcomes for applicants and customers. Specifically, fifty-two ninety did a few different things. The three biggest things, it provided determination or clarifications on the determination of completeness process and procedural requirements for that determination of completeness process. Essentially, what it does is it specified that a determination of completeness must be made within twenty-eight calendar days versus working days, and that the determination of completeness must be based on procedural requirements that we've made apparent and clear to applicants. The procedural, the submittal requirements have to be identified on a land use or building permit application or checklist, so it's very clear to applicants what they have to submit in order to get their application in for review to the city. Fifty-two ninety also, the biggest part of it, provided new timelines for action, and I'll go into those in more detail in just a moment, but it also provided for penalties for noncompliance with those timelines. So in terms of timelines, and some that are, this is a big part of the ordinance in front of you tonight, it amended the requirement for timelines from a one-hundred-and-twenty-day standard review for all types of land use and permit applications to three different prescriptive timelines based on notice requirements applicable to the subject permit. So sixty-five days for projects that don't require public notice. This is a standard building permit application, a lot of our other over-the-counter permits. One hundred days for projects that do require public notice. This is gonna be your land use applications, like your site plan review, binding site plans, those that require a regular public notice. And then one hundred and seventy days for project permits which require notice and a public hearing, so those are gonna be major subdivisions, conditional use permits, wetland development permits. And these changes are noted in Section one C oh-seven-oh of the amendments in front of you tonight. And finally, as I noted a moment ago, it provided for monetary penalties if we don't meet timelines, and that provides for up to twenty percent of the application review fees to be refunded unless additional measures have been adopted. So one of the things fifty-two ninety does was it provides opportunity for jurisdictions to put in place additional measures, which also help to ensure streamlined review of applications. The law provides for ten additional measures, three of which must be put into place in order to minimize, and if they're in place, we minimize the risks associated with fee refunds, refund requirements. Some of these measures are already in place at the city, so they count towards those. And then we have another one that we've included in the ordinance tonight. The first one that we are already doing is imposing reasonable fees. The city's adopted, whoops, I didn't mean to do that. The city's adopted a fee schedule for all types of permit applications. Our fees generally only cover a portion of the actual cost to review fees, typically around fifty percent of the cost of the application review fee, as that includes things that go into inspections related to those building permit applications. Those are all included in the cost or subsidized in the cost to review those applications. So we've adopted measures that satisfy this provision of fifty-two ninety. We have also adopted development regulations, which make housing types an outright permitted use in all zones. We've satisfied this in all districts, in all zoning districts where housing is permitted. It's outright permitted. You don't have to get a special use or a conditional use permit in order to develop housing in our residential or mixed-use zones. And the third option, or the third item, which is included in the amendments tonight, is a provision that would require staff meet with applicants in an effort to clarify permit requirements and necessary corrections during the review process, and then issue a decision after a third submittal if those requirements, if they still are missing requirements. What this does is it eliminates the request for additional information, eliminates kind of that cycle of ask for more information, resubmit, ask for more information, and resubmit, and expedites the permit decision process, so we can get to a permit decision faster. And this is in the amendments in front of you tonight. So in order to maintain compliance, to remain in compliance with the Growth Management Act, we've done a few things. Update Chapter One of the Development Guidelines and Public Work Standards. I will note, that's what's in front of you tonight. I'll note that we do intend, staff does intend, to bring Chapter One back to council in two thousand and twenty-five with, in alignment with the Public Works Department as they're updating the Development Guidelines and Public Work Standards, in order to codify Chapter One as a section of the Lacey Municipal Code. There will likely be some housekeeping amendments to Chapter One at that time as well. The Planning Commission also held a public hearing on these amendments on November thirteenth. No members of the public attended the hearing or provided comments, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously to move forward, move these forward tonight. So tonight, we're asking the council, or we're recommending that the council approve ordinance sixteen sixty-nine so that we maintain or remain in compliance with the Growth Management Act. The requirements of fifty-two ninety go into effect on January first of two thousand and twenty-five.
I would move to adopt ordinance sixteen sixty-nine, amending Chapter One of the Development Guidelines and Public Work Standards Manual to meet the requirements of Senate Bill fifty-two ninety.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, questions? Councilmember Greenstein?
Just one question, really. Before these changes, were we pretty much meeting those timelines anyway?
Yes. Yes.
That was my comment as well. I don't think any of this was, is, has come down the pipe because Lacey was
No.
was slow in getting people's stuff out.
No, we seem to do pretty well.
Councilmember Stenman?
I would think it's safe to say other municipalities or, you know, other jurisdictions weren't.
Yeah, which is why, probably why this is before us. Yeah. Councilmember Dunning?
Yes, my question just had to do with the ten options. I was just wondering, I saw there was obviously the three that we had to at least put in, three, but were there any other options that we are currently doing or we had thought about including in this?
There aren't others that we're doing at this time. I can, if Vanessa wants to speak to some of the other options that maybe we looked at discussing or might potentially bring forward in the new year, I'll let her.
Yeah, excuse me. Absolutely. Thanks for the question. We did go carefully through each and every one of those options to consider which ones would be the best for the city and the applicants. We considered them carefully. We also have been coordinating with our adjacent jurisdictions and the county and having conversations about what would be the best in terms of implementation. However, the way that the bill is written, if we adopt more than three and for some reason have timeline lapses in ten years from now, basically, then it will limit our choices in the future to adopt additional measures that we could to protect ourselves from the fiscal impacts after our next comprehensive plan update, not the one in two thousand and twenty-five, but the one thereafter. So we wanted to include three only in this to preserve those opportunities in the future.
Thanks for that explanation.
And then, just real quick, just for clarification, in the draft, there was, it seemed like a error where the, on page one, two, Section A was lined out, but A wasn't lined out, and it looks like it was corrected on the actual ordinance, so I just wanted to verify if that's what we're actually looking at.
Can you clarify what?
On the draft ordinance, the Section one, or page one, two, the A was lined out, but the A was not lined out, and the subsequent letters weren't correct. But it looks like on the ordinance that was actually caught, so I just wanna make sure that that's what it is moving forward.
Yeah, it looks like on the ordinance, A, in the definition section, I think, is what you're talking about.
Yeah.
It's not, it's lettered correctly.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, it's been motion and seconded to adopt ordinance sixteen sixty-nine, amending Chapter One of the Development Guidelines and Public Work Standards Manual to meet the requirements of Senate Bill fifty-two ninety. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is ordinance sixteen seventy, our budget. Troy.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. The future's definitely bright. The youth council has indeed identified correctly that budgeting is hard. But thanks to the leadership and guidance from the city council and city manager and the dedicated efforts of all of our departments, our directors and staff, we have reached the final stage of our two thousand and twenty-five budget process. The ordinance before you does contain changes from the published proposed budget, but no changes have been made since we discussed at their public hearing on November nineteenth. So your total budget for two thousand and twenty-five is being proposed at two hundred and eighty million, eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. Your general fund budget is being proposed at seventy-eight million, sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars. Both these numbers are significantly lower than this year's budget, primarily because of lower capital improvement plans, associated capital transfers primarily related to the police station project, as well as some changes to debt issuance and our utilities. But, you know, it is worth pointing out that we do have significant increases from inflation, primarily the cost of labor, so we do have high-cost increases there. This budget is also being proposed using an identified reserve to really bridge a one-point-seven-six-million-dollar deficit. Again, you know, thanks to the guidance of the council and its forward thinking, we do have reserves that will help bridge that gap, which will allow us to put a plan together next year for implementation in two thousand and twenty-six. But having said all that, this is a budget to be proud of. It does preserve service levels. It continues to preserve critical infrastructure. It's moving forward in capital project needs. It does provide funding for council's priorities, and it does plan for the city's future. So again, this is something we should be proud of. So I'm happy to suggest that the council adopt ordinance establishing the budget for two thousand and twenty-five.
I would move that we adopt ordinance number one six seven zero, setting the total two thousand and twenty-five budget in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and eighty million, eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars, and the general fund total budget in the amount of seventy-eight million, sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Second.
You just about scared Troy to death over there. Is there a motion, second, in session? Councilmember?
In case someone might have missed it, can you start from the very beginning of your presentation that we've seen like a half a dozen times? Just kidding. Great, great work. You know, I've been a part of a lot of these budgets, and sometimes it's difficult, sometimes it's easy, sometimes it's, just, every time it's a lot of work. So it starts with you and ends with us, but it takes a team effort. Thanks, Troy, and team.
Anyone else?
Yeah. So I know it's like a five-month deal for you to put this together and watching, watching as it comes forward to several council meetings and watching the fact it trimmed out of it, and, oh, that one's there twice, and it was over there, and it was over there, and we'll cut that out, and so on and so forth, and watching us make sure that we add in some of the community components that we, that we're all proud of, that we do here. That all being said, and each department making their contributions, thank you for all your hard work.
Absolutely. You have a just amazing team, and it's not, you know, it's each of the directors coming together under difficult situations, and it's, you know, here in Lacey, it's never, whatever you want, ask for whatever you want, you'll get, you know? That's never been the case, but, you know, we've been a part of some pretty historic budgets. We've seen some historic growth here in Lacey, and we've been smart about it, and that's why in our next agenda IM, we get to designate our reserves. And we're in a position, I think, very few jurisdictions are in right now, where everyone's passing their budget. And I was at my mayor's forum earlier this month, and all the mayors were doing, were asking budget questions, and were very concerned, and same with, you know, everyone is just like, we're in trouble. And I was able to sit back and say, you know, we have some structural things we have to look at, but Lacey's in a pretty good position, and it's because we've made sound fiscal decisions for a long time. It's why the, this ordinance that we just passed is, we've been following it by practice for many years. We're just codifying things we've always done, and so we're not looking at that like, oh, my goodness, we're gonna be in trouble financially, you know, financially, because we're not gonna meet all these requirements. Well, we've been doing it all along, so, I mean, you know, Lacey's been leading in Thurston County for a long time, and it, you know, really feels like people are looking to Lacey because we're doing things the right way, and, you know, that feels good. That's a testament to our wonderful staff and all the hard work you guys have done in this council for, you know, making good financial decisions when it comes to our budget. We've always said you want to see a city's, you know, what they care about, you have to look at their budget, and this budget, once again, says we're meeting our, you know, our priorities in this community, and I'm very proud of it. So with that, there's been a motion and a second to adopt our two thousand and twenty-five budget, which will be, have to change probably next month, but all in favor of adopting this budget as presented right this second, say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. And now on to our reserves designation.
Great, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor alluded to, we are in a position to actually have reserves that the council can designate for future use, so this is really an exercise and another method for the council to further communicate its priorities, its long-term goals, its vision that it's set out for this city. So following the discussion that we had at your most recent work session, the ordinance does, I believe, align with that vision, those long-term goals and those priorities that this council has established. Won't go into great detail what's all in here, but I do wanna highlight a few things. We do have reserves designated for budget policy implementation. This is how we are able to bridge our deficit in the twenty-five budget and will allow us to have time to make further plans. There's money in there for Greg Couillard Park Development, the first phase. There's about ten million dollars in these reserves for various capital facility implementations from the plans that you've adopted. There's about seven million dollars, the last bit of reserves for the police bit of reserves for the police station construction happening next year. And there's about $22 million in reserves for future transportation projects. So we are in the fortunate position to have to make these decisions and seek the guidance from council. So I'll also point out that there are a few minor adjustments from what we did discuss at the work session. I took the liberty of making some rounding adjustments. As an example, we have a, discussed a $93,750 reserve for park priorities. I'm suggesting, or we're suggesting that that be rounded up to $100,000. So there's about three of those minor rounding items within this ordinance, but all within that same range. So again, I'm happy to suggest that the council adopt this ordinance that will establish the reserve designations for year end 2024. I will also point out this ordinance, as in past ordinances, does delegate the authority to the city manager and finance director to assign reserves. This is a level of designation just below the committed designation, but it allows a lot of flexibility throughout the year for us to, again, to continue to communicate the priorities at council. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'd adopt ordinance number 1671, establishing fund balance designation as provided by Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 54 and approving a summary for publication.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
There's a few things that I was really happy to see, like the, the dollars for the vacated, vacated police station. I don't know if it's going to be enough. According to the, the people that we hired to tell us about, you know, they, they walked through and they were just completely appalled at the, what we had here, you know, that thing was built before the internet was even a thing, and, and that kind of stuff that we heard from them. But I, I hope it's enough, but who knows, we may have to come back and change that. But the, the parks, Couyo, master plan, that number has stayed consistent. Thank you for that. And it looks like Joint Animal Services billing is, is also a priority for us. I'm hoping that it's a priority for some other jurisdictions as well. The, our partner jurisdictions, I just don't know yet, and may, may not know until Friday. But all in all, I, I think this is really kind of spread out over, over all the areas that we, that we really agreed on and need. So thank you once again.
Is there any other? I, I just want to make one comment, you know. I remember, you know, several years ago, talking with our, our former city manager as we're looking at our police station and, and how we were going to pull that off. And, you know, we're taking a look at reserves at the time and saying, well, maybe we can pull from reserves, we do this, a couple of these other different things, you know. But what I find just truly amazing is that everything that we just pulled out of a reserves to make the police station happen, to have this level of reserve balance is truly remarkable. I mean, I, I would, I'd like to make a bet, I don't think there's any city our size out there that has our fund balance of reserves right now, after what we just have committed for our, our police station. It's, it's truly a remarkable task for the city of Lacey to be in this situation. But it's, again, the sound fiscal policies of using reserves for one-time spending and not counting on those reserves, you know, indefinitely to try to balance your budget forever and ever. It's just, it's, it's truly remarkable that we're in this situation. And so again, thank you to staff. Thank you for all the directors who I know every year, you know, you've been operating with less and, but you still are, you know, such a, you know, team players and part of the family, and we, we really, really do appreciate everything that our staff does for, for our city of Lacey. So with that, well.
I, I just wanted to highlight the police department for, for a second. You know, one of the few credited police departments in this state, let alone the nation, I believe, that we invested almost half a million dollars in body cameras, in, in fleet cameras to be more transparent. We take a community approach to policing, and we're real serious about the, the safety of our residents and visitors. So I just wanted to give a shout out to the, to the council and staff and the police department, just how important this is, and we recognize it and we invest in it.
Well, and, you know, if you, going through the list of where our fund balance is at for all these different reserves, it's obviously, the council has access to it, it's, it is pretty amazing what we have committed, and it, it shows a pretty, you know, bright future. Although, you know, I say that, and we just went through a historic growth period in, in Lacey, and we have to keep that in mind, too. We're, you know, we're not going to see another 10-year period of like what we just saw in Lacey's history. I, you know, I'd be hard pressed to see that again. So we have to be smart about how we spend our reserves going forward. But I know that we have the right people in place, and I trust the council to continue to make the right decisions when it comes to that. So it's been moved and seconded to adopt this ordinance 1671, designate our reserves. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. So next up is the mayor's report. And I have three appointments, and if the objection, I'm going to do this all in one motion. We had, we had two spots open on the planning commission and one spot open on the Commission on Equity. And this was kind of a historic time right now, because this was, actually will be my first appointment to the Commission on Equity, because as you remember, last time we had a committee that was formed that did the first recommendations on the Commission on Equity. And so this'll, this is my first time recommending an appointment. And then on the planning commission, we had two members of our planning commission who termed out. That means they spent six years apiece. And that is a lot of knowledge. As you know, I know this council is very familiar with, and our new planning commissioners are about to learn what that means to put six years of your life on our planning commission. It is truly amazing to see that level of commitment from our, our community. And so before I make this recommendation, all three are here, would you mind coming up and just introducing yourselves? Yeah, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Robert Lane, and hopefully I'll be joining on the planning commission here shortly. Moved to the community in 2016, bought my first home here in Lacey in 2018, finished leadership Thurston County a year and a half ago, and have just been looking for an opportunity to give back civically. Happy to be here.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is June Yi. Well, I've been in the community for about a year now. Retired military, you know, 25 years, just moved here. Currently work for Department of Commerce, but I'm really excited to be back in my community, to serve the, serve the community and also the mayor and the city council. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Raul. I've been in Lacey since 2018. I work for the Department of Licensing in my day job, which is something I like saying now, a day job. I'm hoping to join the Commission on Equity and help affect change. Really, that's kind of me in a nutshell.
Thank you. So I will move that we appoint Raul Garza to the Commission on Equity, June Yi to the Planning Commission, and Robert Lane to the Planning Commission.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Welcome.
Thank, thank you. Thank you so much. And the other thing is, is as can happen, we had more applicants than we had spots, and that's always difficult because everyone was qualified, and you have to make a decision. The other thing is, is one of the spots that was open for the planning commission was from our urban growth area. And I always, of course, want to make sure that we have a broad representation of, of our community, including our urban growth area, so the planning commission can come together with the knowledge of the whole community and, and give us recommendations, knowing that they represent our community. So we didn't have any applications this time from anyone in the urban growth area. So next time around, when there's a, was an opening, we're really going to try to focus on finding someone within our urban growth area to fill that position so we can get back up to, to on that area. Councilmember?
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I'm always bragging about the planning commission or this, this council because we have a majority of planning commissioners and business owners. And, you know, now I get to brag about our, our Commission on Equity. Thank you for your service. You, you know, there's one thing, driving the bus, but, you know, changing the tires and, and the oil and doing all the things that make it work, you know, inside and out, learning it upside and down, backwards and forward. It's, you know, I have a lot of respect for what you guys, the time you put in, the effort, because we did it. So, yeah, for, for me, just thank you. It's a lot of work, and I appreciate it.
And this is, this is a big, important time. We have our comp plan update, and so there's a lot that's going to be going into it. So, thank you. Councilmember? Yes, please. Speak up. No? Do you have anything? No? Okay.
I just wanted to say, I think all three of you work for the state. And as a fellow state employee, I'm really grateful that you're willing to step up and serve in this way because the day job that you do is stressful enough, but you're still willing to serve your community. And I feel like our government needs that willingness to serve. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to appoint these three candidates to, Raul to the Commission on Equity, June to the Planning Commission, and Robert to the Planning Commission. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed?
If I may, mayor.
The motion unanimously carries.
June, also, we have a couple veterans on the council, too, so, you know, thank you for your service.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, city manager's report.
Thank you, mayor and city council. Have a couple items on the, my report tonight, one of which is the annual wellness report. And I want to invite Alyssa Dolan-Caret up, she is our human resources analyst and runs our wellness program, so.
Okay. Hello. Good evening. My name is Alyssa Dolan-Caret. I'm an HR analyst and the wellness coordinator for the city of Lacey, and I have the pleasure of telling you about our wellness program that we have here for our employees. And I honestly don't know how to use this. Yes, I do. Okay, awesome. Our wellness program, per our policy manual, is designed to provide information and activities to city employees and their eligible dependents to encourage health and safety in the workplace. The wellness program is budgeted and administered through the HR department. And we also earn a 2% medical premium discount when we meet AWC standards and achieve well-city distinction, which we currently hold. And there are six different standards. It's leadership, policy and environment, partnerships, program activities, engagement, and evaluation. Our wellness program is led by our wellness committee, and currently these are wellness committee members. They provide peer support and advocacy to boost our program participation. They also assist in the planning and leading of the wellness events. And we wouldn't have this program without the help and support of every single person on the slide. So I'm very thankful that we have our wellness committee and a lot of support. Our monthly events, we offer, the wellness program offers benefits such as access to our gym, our mileage club, Castlight, food of the month, and fun monthly events, some of which I'll go over later. We plan qualifying events that give the city of Lacey credit towards our well-city distinction. But I think more importantly, our goal is to increase morale, lower stress, and create fun activities. In January, the wellness committee will meet to discuss and plan events for 2025. We structure our plans by using the AWC guidelines. Some of our 2024 events included our cornhole tournament, ping pong tournament, Castlight Step Challenge, summer pickleball tournament, poker walk, Dog Day of Lacey, and our fall pickleball tournament. We also had the pleasure of volunteering with All Kids Win to bag school lunches a few times this year as well. Some of our new events in 2024, we added our cornhole tournament and what we call Dog Day of Lacey. The cornhole tournament was hosted at the Public Workshop, and we reached out to employees for the boards to utilize, which worked out extremely well because we had plenty of sets to accommodate the number of teams signed up. And this is everyone that participated. I believe we had 13 to 15 teams actually signed up. Excellent attendance, very friendly competition. And then to the right-hand side, our Dog Day of Lacey allowed us to partner with Joint Animal Services, which is sometimes a harder-to-reach location because they are off-site from City Hall. So this was a really important event for us to have. This event allowed employees to meet some of the adoptable, adoptable dogs of Joint Animal Services. And one of the dogs, she's pictured here with one of our employees, was adopted the same day after work, too. So that was really, really awesome to see. What's in store for 2025? Like I said, the committee will meet in January to plan and finalize the events for the year. We will plan on continuing the food of the month, monthly mileage club, mental health Mondays, and repeat specific events such as our Castlight Step Challenge, Poker Walk, Pickleball Tournament, and Cornhole Tournament. We've also been working towards updating the basement gym and plan to finish those updates in 2025. Any questions?
Questions? How, how long have we been a wellness?
A well-city?
Well-city. I mean, as well as long as I can remember.
Yeah, you know, I, as long as I've been here, which is less than two years, but longer than that.
Way longer than that.
Much longer.
Goes back to the 90s. Wow.
Yeah.
And, and this is a very important program. Not only is it for our employees and, and healthy activities and kind of taking a break from the, the grind of the day, but also it helps with our insurance premiums as well and keep those costs low. So it's one of those things that, that the city has done for a lot of years as a, you know, do good diligence and, and practice to nurture our, our, doing everything we can to not only save money, but also take care of our employees.
I didn't know we had a gym on site.
You what?
I didn't know we had a gym on site.
In the basement, right under us.
It's in the basement.
Okay. Is it going to move to the new police station when the?
I think they get their own.
Not that equipment. That's our wellness equipment. They get their own.
I'll, I'll show you a tour. It's, it's, it's amazing. Anyway.
All right.
And I, I think the other thing that this, this does, obviously it serves a, a great purpose, but it also brings the, the staff together to do activities and, you know, build a team and all those things. And so we really appreciate all, you know, you guys as our public servants and all you guys do for us.
Thank you. It, it has been really great to see attendance rise in a lot of the events, too, because people that wouldn't normally get to interact because they work in different locations actually get to spend time with each other. So that's always a positive, too.
Nick, you got?
Yeah, I just want to know how I get a cornhole invitation.
I'll make sure to include you next time because it was pretty fun.
Yeah. And who's the ping pong player in, in the city? Who's the, who keeps, who won that?
You know, I can't remember off the top of my head who that was.
Well, I believe Donna and Jenny won one year in the doubles.
They did. They're very good.
Yeah. It gets pretty competitive up there in the ping pong.
Yeah, I bet. I bet.
Is there a dry sauna in the gym?
No.
There's no dry sauna?
No, there's no dry sauna in the gym.
No, no, not, not that. No. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Wrong button here. Again, thank you. And next, before the council tonight on the, my report, we have a bid award for the city's manhole rehabilitation project. And I want to invite Jason Kishani, our utility engineer, up to give some background to council and, and overview of the bidding process.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor and councilmembers. Staff recommends award of Lacey contract number PW 2023-23 to low bidder, Western United Civil Group from Eckolt Washington in the amount of $670,321.85. The engineer's estimate came in a little bit underneath, under that at $475,000, I'm sorry, $475,110.70. We had three bidders on this project. They allotted 40 working days, and we expect to begin work in February. So this is our annual manhole rehab project. This is for wastewater manholes. This project was advertised for three weeks. We opened bids on November 19th. This project This project will rehabilitate 17 manholes and the work will be done at night. Rehabilitation of these manholes includes sealing leaks, cracks, and void spaces, removal of existing deteriorating linings, repair of areas, repairing areas of corrosion and structural deficiencies. And after the repairs are made to the manholes, polyurethane coating will be used to seal the manhole, which extends its, the structure's life. I've included a vicinity map here that kind of shows the areas of the manholes. There's two main areas that we're actually going to be doing the work in. The first three manholes are just around the Home and Roundabout where Lacey Boulevard and Pacific Avenue meet. And one of the manholes is actually on Lacey Street itself. The 14 other manholes are actually all along Desmond Drive and Martin Way East. And again, most of this work is going to be done at night. Actually, 15 of the manholes, we've, I mean, we have contending with traffic and businesses and high wastewater flows. So we've opted to do all this work at night. Here's a little closer look at where the actual manholes are actually located, highlighted in red. Again, the first three are by the Home and Roundabout, and then the other three are sort of in the backyard of Department of Ecology and St. Martin's. But there are some challenges about keeping those businesses unaffected and some of the work being done in Martin Way. So again, a lot of that work is going to be done at night. Here's just a couple of images of one manhole in particular that we're actually contending with. There's a lot of corrosion going on because of hydrogen sulfide gas that's actually offgassing from one of the force mains. And the other picture kind of shows generally what that polyurethane coating looks like or spraying it on looks like. Let me know if you guys have any questions.
Can I get a motion?
I would move to award Lacey contract number PW 2023-23 to low bidder, Western United Civil Group from Yakult, Washington, in the amount of $670,321.85.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
In your, in your presentation, were, were those, those pictures, were those just illustrations or is that actual right here, right now?
The two on the left were actually of one manhole. That's where we're actually, we need to really repair that inside drop.
That's ours right here, right now.
Yep.
Okay. It's not on Lacey Street, is it?
That is the one on Lacey.
Wonderful. Councilmember Dunnay?
Yes, I just, this was the first bid that I've seen since I've been on council where the engineer's estimate was pretty drastic, potentially lower. And I was just wondering if there's a specific reason why the bids kind of came out much higher than we thought.
Yeah, I mean, this was a question kind of anticipated. Unfortunately, there was just a number of factors that we were dealing with, one being the, the night work. That was kind of the last minute decision that, to deal with those traffic flows and, and not affect the businesses, we opted to do it at night. And that was a little bit more of a substantial cost than we anticipated. There was a couple other factors besides inflation. We're dealing with three of those manholes. I mean, they're actually pretty deep, big and deep manholes, and three of them have these PVC liners that was actually shown in the illustration as well. Those turned out to be a little bit more work than, at least the contractors felt there was more work involved in removing those liners and, and doing the work behind what's going on behind those. So they just, it ended, the bids came up quite a bit higher than we expected.
So when the, when the contractors come and do their bid, they do a thorough full inspection, they go down each of the manholes, check it out, see what's happening, come back and, and give you their best, their best bid. And this is the lowest that, that came out was a 670.
Yep. Yeah, we unfortunately was hoping for a little bit more of a bidding pool. But, yeah, we, actually, they didn't go down in the manholes. I did submit some appendices with our bid that showed photos of each manhole on the inside.
Gotcha.
And I believe that one of the subcontractors that is doing the work for this contractor has done a lot of the coatings on manholes in, in the past.
As, you know, a few of us are small business owners ourselves, so we, we value the, the consideration you took into businesses being shut down. And other than that, I mean, a lot of cities, some of these manhole covers can be perceived as really bad potholes, not in the city of Lacey. So, you know, the value of the work that's being done here.
Anything else? Nick, do you still have your hand up and answer your questions? Okay. Well, it's been moved and seconded to award the Lacey contract number PW 2023-23 to the low bidder. All in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed?
No, I'm going to recuse because my business is right there and I just look at small conflict of interest.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think there is a conflict of interest, but that's.
Okay. Then, right.
Okay.
Making sure.
Okay. So anyone opposed? No one's opposed? Then that motion will pass unanimously.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay. And now we're on to other business. And, go ahead.
Yeah, if I can, I would like to kind of set this up. This is a, a big, big night. As the council recalls last spring, kind of wrestling with, looking at the parks' capital improvement program and ongoing costs. And so you formed a, a work group of citizens from various interests and backgrounds to kind of take a deeper dive into our parks improvement program, cost of maintenance, and come up with some recommendations. So they have been working very hard and diligently over the last, you know, four months, meeting regularly and looking and developing this recommendation. And so tonight, the purpose of is really just the official handoff of that, that recommendation to council. We have, you know, Jen and, and Yvette Temple, the chair of the work group, will provide an overview of the process they went through, some of the, all the issues they talked about during the course of the last four months and the formation of the committee's recommendation. And then an opportunity for council to kind of hear all that and then also kind of ask some initial questions and, and kind of some initial conversations. But I also want to make sure council's aware that we are scheduling this for a work session topic on January 14th where we can go into a deeper dive. So really to nice that handoff, get some initial conversations going, get some understanding what maybe some additional information the council needs to prepare themselves for that more formal conversation in January. And before I turn it over to Yvette and Jen, I just want to also thank the work group for their efforts in this process. They have dedicated themselves to this work and it is a lot of hard work and a lot of information to sort through to come up with this recommendation. So I do really appreciate them giving that time to the community and providing that advice and guidance. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jen with the formal presentation of the recommendation.
Great. Well, thank you, Rick. Good evening, Mayor Ryder, Deputy Mayor Miller, and members of the council and members of the public. First, yeah, echo what Rick said about the work group. We just super appreciate your efforts. And Yvette will have a chance to talk tonight. I also want to recognize two of our other work group members in the audience. So we have Karen Idiker here and Ruth Weigelt. So thank you for coming tonight and all your efforts. Also, I wanted to take a moment to thank the staff. Jenny Wilson, who's also here, she's our senior parks planner. She was the staff liaison to the work group. Carter Gibson, our executive assistant, and Jamie Oakland, our public works parks maintenance supervisor, also provide a lot of information, heavy lifting. Also to our finance department, we super appreciate you as well, Chelsea Yarwood and Troy Wu for all their efforts, too. So council will recall, the work group was formed by resolution number 1148 and 1156 to address parks funding challenges. And the assignment for the work group, the, the purpose was to review parks expansion and replacement projects identified in the six-year Parks Capital Improvement Program. We also refer to that as the PCIP. The work group was to analyze all available funding options and recommend to the council a funding package identifying funding sources, including recommended amounts, and also to provide a prioritized list of parks capital projects. Oops. Now I went too far. You'll also recall the 2023 to 2029 Lacey Parks Culture Recreation Comprehensive Plan. I think that it outlines the vision well of the, you know, a park system such as the one that Lacey has. It's a very robust park system. And I think that we've talked a lot about the benefits, and I think everyone agrees that the benefits of this type of a system being, you know, not limited to these, but inclusion, resilience, physical and mental health, building community, and, and providing access to play for folks. But what we also understand are that there are some challenges and, which is why we're here with this conversation. And those challenges here are listed on the screen. Keeping up with a tremendous amount of growth with aging infrastructure, increased maintenance needs, needs for parks improvements, and then a need for dedicated and sustainable parks funding. So the methodology for the work group included meetings twice a month from August through December of 2024. The work group had 15 diverse and collaborative community members providing valuable input on the recommendation. And I really want to thank not only the members, like we said before, but also this council for putting this work group together. There was a three-member council committee who screened and also did some interviews for the work group. And it was a really great, well-rounded group of people. And so you can see all the names of the, not only voting members, but there were some non-voting members. And what I want to note here is that whether they were voting or non-voting, everybody was able to provide input and be engaged in the, in the discussions. The meetings consisted of subject matter expert presentations from Lacey staff. Just lots of discussion amongst the work group members. There were polls and breakout activities. We also took the members on a parks tour and they were able to visit 10 different sites. And with that, I would like to have Yvette present their recommendation.
Great. Thank you so much. Wait, can you hear me? Okay. Well, thank you so much. After considering numerous funding options, the work group determined that an MPD was the most viable path for predictable and dedicated funding to manage, maintain, and improve Lacey parks. Local examples of the MPD success in other jurisdictions did provide a model for implementation. The work group encourages the Lacey City Council to draft a ballot measure for voter approval accordingly. We recommend a levy rate of 45 cents per thousand assessed value. This would generate $5,942,891 annually for parks. The cost to homeowners is going to be approximately $225 in annual property tax. And that's based on the average residential property assessment of $500,000. Since inflation will adversely affect the revenue generated from an MPD over the lifetime of the levy, we encourage the city manager and the city council to consider a phased increase up to the maximum levy rate.
Thanks, Yvette. In addition to the main recommendation that Yvette went over, the work group had some additional input. And they, their intent is to generate additional funding for Lacey parks. And so it's a continued commitment to support Lacey parks and public works parks maintenance through the city's general fund. They encouraged the council to consider the benefits and limitations of debt issuance. They also recommended an initial 40% allocation toward maintenance and operations and 60% to new capital projects. And I'll show you how that connects with the projects and how they ranked the projects in a future slide here. But they also did encourage council to allow ample time for community education. They also encouraged council to consider reassigning select existing parks reserved, reserves. And so there's a few projects listed here that they recommended because they are maintenance type needs, relatively low cost, and one-time in nature, and they thought that they'd be appropriate for reserve funding. So essentially allocating reserves that are already there toward these projects, and then they would come off of the parks capital, the PCIP list. They're actually on that list as well. And it just means that MPD dollars would not be needed for those ones. They also recommended staff continue to leverage sponsorships and grants for additional revenue. That staff continues to regularly assess program vendor and rental fees for revenue generation, which, which we do both of those things. And what we also do is consider projects for legislative direct appropriation funding, but the work group recommended to obviously continue with that effort and just make the, you know, city dollars go further. They also thought there would be an opportunity for council to potentially prioritize lodging tax funds for the operation of parks facilities that really do draw those visitors in from outside that 50-mile radius into the county, such as the RAC, the Lacey Museum, and the future Greg Q. Yo Park. So they did prioritize the projects per their assignment. And because they determined that the revenue generated from an MPD should include, you know, that dedicated allocation both towards the new capital projects, that 60% initially, and then 40 cent, 40% toward MNO or maintenance and operation. Consequently, the work group ranked the two categories separately. So this is the new capital projects on this screen here. And these are in order of how the work group did their prioritization. And since we're not doing a deep dive tonight, I'll just read the top five here. Meridian Park potential pickleball courts, skate features, and/or pump track. A Spray Park in central Lacey. The pool and indoor playground, potential partnership. So those two and three correspond to the Young Child and Family Center of Lacey project. Number four there is the Greg Q. Yo Park next phase, which would complete all of Phase One. And then the fifth one there is the Meridian Park sports field development that's currently in the master plan for that site. And in regards to the replacement or MNO projects, and this is the, the 40% that I talked about earlier for maintenance could take care of these needed replacement projects plus the MNO that would be needed due to the completion of the, the capital projects. So again, I'll just read the top five. Huntermore Park Playground Replacement, Home and Park Picnic Area Renovation, the Wonderwood Park Trails Resurfacing, the RAC Infield Turf Replacements for Field One, Fields One and Two, and the RAC Baseball Complex Playground Replacement. So then, next steps, as Rick had mentioned, would be a deeper dive into this topic and a discussion at your January 14th work session. And we'd like to hear, you know, what council, what type of information and resources you all would like us to come back with for that work session so that we can be prepared for that discussion. Well, thank you, and we're happy to answer questions you might have.
Any questions? Deputy Mayor?
So, definitely in favor of, you know, considering a phased-in approach, should we go down this route? I, I can appreciate the, the 60-40 split, capital facilities and, and the MNO. I did do some numbers on assessed value based on the model that's been presented tonight. So at 500K, we're talking about $18.75 a month. At 400, we're talking about $15 a month. And at 300, we're talking about $11.25 a month. And at 200, we're talking about $7.50 a month per resident. So very reasonable ask, especially if we go with a graduated kind of approach to it. So I, I, you know, even though I have the numbers in my head and I've got them down here on paper, that would, that's kind of one thing I'd like to see in our next conversation so that we can kind of look at how we're going to, you know, put this out. But thank you for all that you guys did, and thank you for rolling up your sleeves and, and being there in the meetings that I saw as I walked by on my way to wherever. You guys are kind of grinding away at this. So that was, thank you for, for doing all those things. And so with that, I, I feel like this is a, a good option for us as a city. We've, we could really use it. And, and I think those general fund dollars could, you know, go to, you know, lightening up some of the, the things that we use for reserves. So. So definitely in favor of this, of this path that we're taking right now.
Councilor Greenstein?
So there, there's several things I'd like to see for the meeting on the 14th, you know, and that I'd like to have available at that meeting, starting with some real detail on what the money would be spent on beyond just the list, you know, detail of what you're thinking in each of those projects. Also, some, some information on the LTAC dollars. I think that if you talk to any of the hoteliers in this community, and the primary reason for LTAC is to put heads in beds, every one of them will tell you that the Rack puts more heads in beds than anything else in this community. So I'd like to take a really deep dive into looking at using more of that, those funds, particularly for the Rack. I think that's something we need to deep dive into. Also want information pertaining to the timing of a ballot measure. So when are we thinking? What are the pluses and minuses of going at different times? I think we have to take into account very seriously, as we think about this as a council, that we have a TBD that we're going to have to go, the Transportation Benefit District that we're going to have to go back to the public for, to ask them to reapprove that, to continue funding. To go two years in a row to the public asking for money is a little scary, especially in this current economy, and the, and the people are not, I don't know that it's that easy to pass anything like this at the moment. So I think we need a deep dive into the timing, what the different dates will look like. Do we need, do we have to meet any requirements? Do we need to meet any certain requirements on this, on the ballot? Is it a simple majority? Do we know the answer to that? Do we have to have a certain turnout like we do based on other things that we've had to go on ballots for? So all of that, we just need all of that detail so we can have a, you know, comprehensive discussion of this on the 14th. Thank you.
Councilor Stedman?
So I want to start by saying I fully 100% support these recommendations, and I'm going to give a couple of reasons why. Number one, this will only boost our local economy and make us more financially diverse. It, it's an investment at all ages, seniors, youth, et cetera. Number three, promotes healthy lifestyle. Number four, I would spend $250 one-way in gas going down to Bend, Oregon while my wife was going the other direction, north of Seattle, with, with our other kid. And, you know, so it's, you know, spend it here, it stays here. Spend it somewhere else, it improves their, their municipality and their quality of life. And having said that now, we're, number five, we're empty nesters, and I still support this. It's like education. Someone paid for your education when you were a kid, and even though you, you get educated and you can even get a doctorate, you should still remember that other people behind you need to be educated, and they deserve that same level of investment. And so again, I support this 110,000% if there's such a thing, and I will tomorrow, and I will promote it, and I'll be a part of it, and any way it can help, I'll do it.
Thank you. Councilor Mayor?
Thank you for the work that the committee did to come up with these recommendations. I agree with what some of my fellow council members have said. I think along the lines of Councilmember Greenstein's comments, I strongly believe that we need to find a way to fund our parks, and I think that this work has given us a roadmap, but we have to be able to show people what they're going to be paying for. Like, we have to give examples of what your tax dollars would pay for, and I think this recommendation gives us that. We just have to be able to transform it into things that we can tell to voters. I served on a volunteer committee in 2021 to gather some very preliminary feedback on what people in Lacey wanted in their parks programs in the future, and a lot of the stuff that I heard when I was standing at playgrounds, talking to fellow parents there with their kids, is included in this report. A splash park, right? Opportunities for nicer trails. Indoor recreation, Deputy Mayor, indoor recreation. I mean, we, we've been hearing for years that these are the things that Lacey needs, and I'm excited that we now have a really thoughtful set of directions to get us to the ballot, to get the funding that we need to do these things for Lacey in the future. So thank you very much.
Councilor?
Just, just a quick, I agree with largely with what Robin has said here, but I just would really like to emphasize that I don't think there's anything else we do in Lacey that contributes quite as much to the quality of life as the beautiful park system we have. And being able to maintain it, expand it to meet the growth of our area is just super, super important. So I'm really looking forward to that conversation in mid-January, and I hope our community will come along with us this time. Thanks.
So I just, having been through this process, one, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Dunning.
Yeah, just real quick. I mean, those of us who sat on those selection committees for, for this group know how much experience is on this group, and I just really would like to see what our strategy is to translate, you know, that information to the voters, because I think, you know, like everyone else is saying, we need a really, really solid plan that we can actually stand behind as well and broadcast to our residents so they trust us to do right by the, these funds.
Thanks. So the, one thing I'd like to add to all this is having actually, you know, been through this process one time before, whenever you talk about property taxes, it's really confusing when you talk about property taxes to the average, you know, homeowner or property owner in the city of Lacey, because it's, it's very confusing. What we really should be, need to be talking about is what is our levy rate? Because it all comes down to your, your levy rate, right? And I've been, I said this at the beginning of our budget cycle this time, as we were looking to take off what was 18 cents on our levy rate at one point when we passed the, the bonds back in 2002 and 2000, you know, where that debt's about ready to come off. That was, you know, at one point, like, I think it was like 18, I don't remember what exactly it was, but around 18 cents what affected the levy rate. That, with our growth of our community, has dropped down to hardly anything. I, I'm putting Troy on the spot right now, but what's, what's, what's the effect on that levy rate in the last couple of years from, from the parks bonds? Started off at 18 cents.
Yeah, it was really pennies. I think the, the levy ordinance you just adopted was three cents per thousand, and that, but the bond issue from, or the ballot issue from 2001 was actually split into two bonds, so call it six cents really, if you want to compare apples to apples.
Okay. So this is what I'm, I'm talking about, is I, I made the comment at the beginning of our, our budget process that having an historically low levy rate for our, our city this size, I think it's a testament to what, what we've been able to do as a community of taking revenge, of refinancing things, you know, the growth that we've had. So every time, you know, this is tremendous growth we've had in our community, we're spreading that among, every time a new, greater assessed value, it gets spread out more and more and more, and that levy rate drops more and more and more. I, I don't think there's another city that has a levy rate this low. And the comment I, I made at the time is because our levy rate's so low, there's probably services that our community expects that we can provide that we're not providing because our levy rate's so low, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's a great honor to have historic lows levies, but you also have to say, then what are we not providing as a community? And we've been able to have this historic low levy rate with everything that we've been able to do as a community, and all of our parks and everything else. That being said, I am still in favor of, of starting this levy rate low. I wouldn't, I'm, I'm not in favor of going straight to 47 cents at all, and I think that's a conversation that we need to have. I, I would like to see, you know, what does it look like at 25 cents? What does that do to the overall rate? Expect potential growth, you know, and I know Tom Waters done a little bit of this. They had a graduated rate as well. And so I, I think, and if we play this right, you know, as we grow, if we adjust the rate, I mean, it's, it's not going to have as big of an effect on the taxpayer as you see it right now, as, as presented right now. It's, but that's how complicated property taxes are. So anyway.
Just, just as a word of caution, when you do a graduated rate, you've got to be extremely careful that it's done correctly. EMS, our EMS service is, is suffering right now because of going with a graduated rate and not going with the, going with the rate that they wanted. And you've got to be really careful in how the Department of Revenue defines that, that function, because it's really easy to mess up. Tom Waters having problems because of it. EMS had a huge problem because of it, and we'll have to go back to the public to fix it. So just really word of caution that we make sure that our city attorney and city manager do the research to make sure we get it right, because they did all that. The prosecutor, you know, the county attorney's, county prosecutor's office was involved with EMS, that's who represented them. Department of Revenue, still, it all went wrong and did not work, so word of caution.
So I absolutely agree. There is some lessons that have been learned from our other members. I've had this conversation with our city manager and said, please learn what they thought they were going to do and what actually happened and where they made the mistake so we don't repeat it if we do the same thing.
We'll have that information for-
The mistake of doing what the Department of Revenue told us to do was the mistake we made.
Well, so let's, let's, let's learn from that.
And we'll work on getting that information together for January.
Councilor Stedman?
I'll say that we will do it right, and we will continue to do what we've done since 2001, and that's pay off early debt and do the responsible, sound decision-making that Lacey always does. It's what we do, it's what we're known for.
I mean, we're about ready to have no outstanding debt in 2026, zero. That's crazy.
Well, we're going to issue new debt.
Well, we, we'll have to.
We're going to issue new debt this, coming in '25, so.
We've been saying that for a long time.
There'll be one day when we have no debt. I was just going to offer for the discussion that if a graduated approach is so legally challenging and complicated, and we have recent examples of it going wrong, is the complexity of that worth it? Is that the way we want to go when it's so rife with risk? Or do we just do it the simpler, direct way?
That's, that's a conversation that we will, I think, we'll have on, on the 14th. There's pros and cons, right? If you do it the wrong way, then you're in trouble. I wanted to see what does it look like to do it the right way? And I don't, I don't know. I don't think we have enough information to say what we should do. I wish we could do a graduated rate the right way, how we think we should do it, and it, you know, as our assessed value grows, and then, but that will all have to be spelled out for us. And trust me, staff knows all about this. We've been, they, this is, you know, this is something that we realized, other, other jurisdictions have tried, and they got it wrong, so I don't want to do it that way.
And I will summon Occam's razor into the discussion and just say, sometimes the simplest answer is the right one.
Sure. Yep.
You spoke about our historic growth, right, over the years, and that we'll probably never see it again. I ask people every, you know, almost every day for my last 11 years, why they chose Lacey, you know? And it was, people in the military were, hey, I was stationed here before and loved the parks, seniors, it's like the trails and pickleball. Kids from, you know, families up north and down south and, and east, they played baseball here before. They didn't even know Lacey existed, and they liked it so much that they came back and, and bought here, invested in this community, you know? So that, that attributes to a lot of our growth, too, and is our park system.
Well, and I, I think, and we've had this conversation, and I know we're getting to the end of this, and we can talk this more on, on the 14th. We, we all know that our, our parks is sort of the crown jewel, and we've all been very supportive, you know, Greg Cuyo, I mean, we have so much undeveloped parks, too, that's, I was, I was kind of surprised in some of the rankings, because we have some undeveloped parks that I think would be absolutely amazing and that we've been sitting on for a long, long time. I mean, Watchers Park extension, you know, we've been talking about that forever. That's been master planned, that could be just beautiful. Same with, with Long Lake, right? We purchased the property, that, that could be, I think we could have some, some, some work with the county on maybe doing some joint things there, too, but there's some just amazing assets that we have in our community that I would love to see somehow get developed. And, and I think the question we have to ask ourselves is if we don't go with the recommendation that just went, did all this community outreach, we went through months and months of planning, we asked the community, what do you, what do you think? And if we somehow say no, then what is the alternative, right? It's like, if, if it's not this, then what would it be? And if we, and if, and if we say no to everything, what does that actually do to our quality of life in Lacey? And that isn't a very, that's, I think, the crux of this, at the end of the day. So thank you, Yvette. Thank you for all, you know, we have an amazing community, put all of your time in, you know, you guys are, are so amazing. Thank you for all your hard work. We have a lot to digest, but we, we really thank you. I think that's the one thing that, you know, we sort of missed the last time around was sort of like this planning side of it, and we didn't want to make the same mistake twice. And so we went out to the community, and thank you for your, your hard work.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A great conversation. So we'll start queuing up for, preparing for that work session on January 14th, and I got a lot of notes here, and I know others do, too, but just as a highlight, we'll come back to that with more detailed information of what the, the parks improvements would be, you know, looked at in that first priority list in terms of what the, what would be obtained with the ballot measure potential, and then also the various options for rates to go out for in the ballot measure, including a stepped approach and best, learn from best practices from other jurisdictions. And then more conversation about other funding sources like LTAC opportunities as well, and then, of course, I got some more to list, too. So we'll put all this information together and, and bring a package to the council on the 14th and continue to move this conversation forward. And I'll just close again, just like I opened, just to thank the work group for all their work and effort and dedication this process, as well as the staff, the Parks Department staff and the Finance Department staff, that put a lot of efforts into getting information together so that everybody had the good information to work with. So with that, again, thank you, Council, for the conversation.
Thank you. Okay. Now we're on to boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'll go up first. So the one report I have is for Transportation Policy Board, which met on December 11th. We had somewhat light agenda, and, and this circumstance, I know Robin already sort of reported out on the consolidated grant rankings, I think, from TRPC. You guys got that first. Now it went to TRP, you know, TBB, so that's, has already been talked about. We did receive a project overview of our Little Rock Road and 113th Avenue Southwest Bridge and Intersection Improvements. This is one of the Public Works projects in Thurston County that was actually, received some approvals for some federal funding to improve a, a bridge, and we got a full presentation about that. And it's always nice to sort of hear about some of these projects more in depth, especially on the projects that we have funded as a, as a region with, you know, with federal funds that went through Transportation Policy Board and onto TRPC. And I know we also talked about the High Capacity Transportation Study Visioning Event, and I think you talked about that as well. We got a briefing of that, and, you know, one thing about the Transportation Policy Board, that's, I think, a little bit different than the, the full board at TRPC, is that we do have some members who've been around for a long time, and we started this amorous program. So for example, we have former Mayor Pete Komet, who's an amorous member of the Transportation Policy Board, because a lot of the projects that we talk about, these transportation projects we talk about have been, have years and years and years and years of discussion about, and to sort of have that history has been really important, and as you're making future decisions, is, you know, where, where the community, where is the plan? Where is the community at in that plan? You know, where are the dollars at? And you try to, you know, match those two up. The high-capacity transportation state, high-capacity transportation is, is something that I, I get, I have been asked about the most, is when are we going to get rail to Thurston County, right? I mean, this is something that has been talked about for- I mean, this is something that has been talked about for forever and ever and ever and ever, before even Pete was elected official. And so we did we did get a update about that. Obviously, a lot of this visioning is looking more on bus rapid transit and all that. But one of the things that always happens when we talk about rail is you say, okay, let's look at this, you know, and this happens all, you know, every four or five years. We direct staff or we get a grant, and what you see is how much money it's going to cost. And it ends the discussion, right? It just we just have never gotten any farther than just, wow, look at those dollars, and then nothing goes anywhere. But it was actually Pete Komet who brought up. So if we were ever to have rail, let's say someday in the future, we're going to have rail, where's where's the best route? Where where would it go? Because if if you don't plan, forget about the numbers, if you don't put a line on a map and try to see if that makes sense, and the long feature, dollars aside, it will never, ever, ever happen, right? It's like one of those things that's like, when you talk about these big projects, if you don't put it on a map, you don't put it on a plan, then it's just never going to happen. And I that is a different approach. We have never taken that approach up to this point. And one of the interesting parts of this is what really has been an issue is the whole Niskuallie Hill, right? Is is any sort of proposed route up to this point has gone around the hill, which unfortunately doesn't put us near late down, you know, anywhere in Lacey or Olympia, the routes that you really needed. And it 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 makes it too long, where any sort of light rail, it just it's not, it'd be so much easier to get on I-5, that where it you can't ever make, you never make the case for it. However, as we've been talking about on I-5 from Mounts Road through Tom Water, we're going to see a major redesign of that area, which they believe could possibly change the angle to allow rail from the DuPont to come up right the freeway and possibly and possibly have, you know, say, a station right off in our Quamouth Village area, keep going down to Olympia, have a station there, and probably that's where it would end, which is something that has never really been talked about, because that angle up to this point has been too dramatic. But that angle is about ready to change, and you could possibly do it. That is just news. The 25 years, the 30 years this has been talking about, this is sort of a one of the things that's a little bit different. And so we did sort of throw around, okay, what would that actually look like? Because you see that light rail along I-5, that's now going to go all the way down to DuPont, and, you know, and it's still a long ways away to get to DuPont, but.
It's another 20 to 30.
It's another 20, 30 years, but it would be interesting to see, is it feasible to be able to go right up I continue to go up I-5, have a stop there, you know, at Quamouth, and a stop down in Olympia? And what would that actually look like? So that I'm saying, out of the 25 years, this has been a long decades and decades this has been discussed, that's the first time TRPC or anyone else remembers that actually being discussed. So I thought that was noteworthy. We'll see, you know, what happens from here. But that is the end of my report. Deputy Mayor.
Just a couple of quick things. Jazzcom met on the 9th of December. The budget, 2025 budget was passed, and the Jazzcom Positive Outcomes Coordinator was selected to the Seventh Cohort Management Leadership Certificate Program of 100 applicants. So that was kind of cool. The fee waived adoption that happened on December 10th through the 14th produced about 64 adoptions. And one of the reasons why it was kind of like a it was so adoptions are pretty slow during the winter time. And so it was it was like, how can adoptions be better in the winter time? And they're usually pretty abysmal. So a grant came in, and the grant was designed to to, you know, waive the adoption fees. So an event was created, and that event produced more adoptions than we've seen in that time period pretty much ever. So definitely very cool. So and then Jazzcom was recognized at the national level for reaching 1,000 surgeries on site, which was is pretty incredible for jurisdiction our size. It was the ASCPA that awarded Jazzcom this honor, but it was also the ASCPA who gave Jazzcom the $40,000 that allowed us to to purchase the equipment that we needed to do the surgery. So, you know, the award created the surgical center, which created the massive amount of surgeries that we that Jazzcom has been able to do, which created, you know, the national recognition. So pretty cool there, too. Let's see. Just real quick from the EDC, the expo was two Thursdays ago down at Great Wolf Lodge. Really worked out really good. Some breakout sessions were really great. So so one of the things coming out of that is that the Department of Commerce wants to partner with the EDC to to do business with West Africa. And so that those things are kind of being worked out right now. I may end up going to West Africa in March for through the EDC as president of the Thurston County Economic Development Council. So more to come on that. Our new members who were voted in, we've got seven new members for the EDC who were voted in, will take their seats in early January. So we'll have some some new EDC committee members, which should be pretty exciting. And then one last thing I wanted to bring up is from the National League of Cities Conference that I went to, me and a couple other of the council members here. One of the sessions that I took was called Empowering the Early Childhood Workforce. And my my reason for taking that session was because, you know, of our ILA that we have with North Thurston Public Schools and the YMCA for the Early Childhood Center in where the Bucknell Ballfields used to be. And so I wanted, you know, anything I could do to help with that situation, I wanted to make sure I took a session on it. So this this session is is was basically about, you know, placing families and children at the center of policy, was one of the main kind of objectives of, you know, getting that early childhood workforce up and running in your community, improvement outcomes for for children. 90% of the brain's capacity develops by the age of five. Children under five spend more time in childcare than anybody else. And so the the goal here is, you know, support the local businesses as they try to support. So one of the one of the cool things that that really came out of that was, you know, I won't say mobilizing, but getting the the buy-in from the local teachers' unions and getting them advocating for, you know, daycares and child centers was one of the key things that some of the other successful communities were able to do. And so what they were saying was like, look, if you get the teachers involved, which they apparently are very happy to get involved, you can have a successful, you know, early childhood workforce who can actually work their way into teaching certificates and and actually graduate into better jobs for themselves, but starting in that childcare arena and mentoring those people into becoming teachers, it kind of creates this pool of people who want to get involved in that kind of work. And since we are, you know, looking to, you know, build this this facility out at the old Bucknell Ballfields, it's going to be one of those things where it's like, we're going to really need to develop and have housing for the people who would be doing that kind of work. So I'll also be taking this information with me to the EDC to, because I know that the the executive director is on a couple boards that that can really help with this. And so I'll be taking this with me there as well. And that is my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Greenson.
My committees have not met yet this month. They have a couple later this week, so I will have a report at the next meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman.
I have no report, but I do want to say, December 17th, three years ago, my sister passed away. And Jason Hearn, past council member here, he got to spend a whole day with me and my sister once, and he can attest to how beautiful a person she was. So I just wanted to tell my sister I loved her.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox.
Okay, I have three for you. The Intercity Transit Authority met on December 4th. We conducted a public hearing on the 2025-2030 Draft Strategic Plan. We appointed Wendy Goodwin, who serves on our Parks, Culture, and Recreation Board, to the Transit Authority as a community representative. And her term begins January 1st, 2025, and runs through the end of 2027. And Wendy replaces another Lacey resident on the authority, Don Milnick, who is a former planning commissioner here. So Lacey will continue to be represented not only by the council member me, but through a community representative as well. So I'm happy about that. We also authorized the general manager to execute a contract amendment with an organization called PAL American, which provides security services for the Olympia Transit Center. It's expensive. It's over $1 million. We also appointed a number of individuals to the Citizen Advisory Committee. Intercity Transit is one of, I think, only two in the whole state that has a citizen advisory board that reports to it. So there were two reappointments. There were, I think, seven new members appointed, plus a youth member. And then there were alternates for the youth member and for some of the other appointees in case they can't finish their their term on there. And then the last thing we covered on there was kind of an overview and discussion of how the restructuring of fixed routes come September 2025 might look. And it's geared is designed to take the existing routes and try to improve them some with frequency of service, of also analyzing some of the stops, like, does this make sense still, or should we be looking at another stop on the street? So that more to come on that. And then on December 11th, the Lacey, Olympia, Tom Water, and Thurston County Clean Water Alliance Board met. LOT, as it's more commonly referred to, celebrated its 48th anniversary on November 30th. This organization began in 1976 with an agreement by the four jurisdictions for the City of Olympia to operate joint treatment facilities. But since then, LOT has grown into its own as a nationally recognized organization and has is doing our community a lot of good. We also approved a new collaborative agreement between LOT and the Squawson Island Tribe in our joint support of water quality. The board approved the sale of LOT's Mullen Road property here in Lacey to the City of Lacey. So that's now down to our city manager and the executive director of LOT to thread the needle to make it all happen. Those are the the main points of that one. And then Regional Housing Council also met on the 11th. And this is a time of sort of planning ahead and positioning for the grant application period that comes early in 2025. The Housing Council has two advisory boards. One is for homeless services and one's for affordable housing. And they each made a number of recommendations about funding priorities, and rent assistance came out on top. And that would generally be a one-time payment to help somebody cover a shortfall in rent to prevent them from being evicted, with the idea of being you combat homelessness by making sure people aren't homeless to begin with, that they can stay in there in where they're living. Utility assistance, also generally a one-time payment of bills, emergency home repair, and fees and deposits to secure housing. So sometimes somebody who actually has a job can't quite come up with all the the down payments, you know, first and last month's rent, deposits, and all this kind of stuff is a barrier. So it's trying to remove those barriers to help people get into rental housing. So that will all start up in early January. There'll be a period of time where they send out requests for proposals for affordable housing and capital projects. They anticipate about $5.7 million being available in 2025. And there's also a good bit more than that, about 13.5 available for the homeless prevention services. There's a one point of that amount, there's a $1.2 million set aside for cold and hazardous weathered emergencies, the point in time annual point in time homeless count, and the system called Coordinated Entry to help get homeless individuals into shelters and other housing. So stay tuned for more fun from the Regional Housing Council. It's it's been an interesting year. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Vasquez.
Do we have a date for the point in time census, Carolyn?
If we do, I don't know what it is.
Okay.
We can look it up, though.
Okay. I have two reports, Council. The Thurston Regional Planning Council met on December 6th. One of the things we did, and I sent the summary notes out to the council for TRPC, but we approved the 2024 Federal Transportation Funding Call for Projects action. So we made award recommendations. We ended up recommending to award over $19 million in federal grant funding to 14 projects and programs. A lot of these projects are either, you know, intercity transit requests, Lacey, Olympia, Tom Water, Yelm, Incorporated Thurston County. There was a set aside of over a half a million dollars for the small rural counties, because a lot of times it's hard for them to compete with the large pool for larger cities, so they have a set aside. So we fund some of the smaller rural projects as well. Included in that action, we got money for College Way Corridor Phase 3, so $1.5 million for that. Martin Way Corridor Study has $2.5 million in federal funding allocated, and we have improvements to the Shehale's Western Trail at $1.6 million. So a lot of good projects that are getting federal funding. TRPC did an excellent job of finding the way to maximize a lot of federal dollars that have a very specific way that they have to be used. So there were four different grant categories with different criteria, different timeframes, and they figured out a way to spend every dollar we had access to on projects in our community. We also talked a little bit about some of the consolidated grant rankings. So TRPC gets money from the Department of Transportation every year through their consolidated grants project process. And this year, TRPC submitted two requests or two applications for funding. One, for continuation of expanded service for our rural transit program that serves places that intercity transit essentially doesn't or can't serve. So further flung areas, the bus goes out to Bukota and to Nino and Yelm. And TransServe PNP is the the vendor that does that work. So they requested to receive funding to continue expanded services, and they requested money for the vehicles to run the service. And it was sort of, it was a very difficult conversation, because we have one opportunity to put in an A request that is guaranteed to get funded, and then a B request, which may or may not get funded. And so the committee had to choose which of those two things to get guaranteed funding for. But it's sort of like the the gift of the magi, if anyone's familiar with that story, where we can't really run expanded service if we don't have vehicles. And we can't, you know, if we get the vehicles, but we don't do the expanded service, we're still not serving people. So it's a very difficult issue, and it throws into sharp relief that we probably shouldn't be running our rural transit program off of competitive grants. So we need to come up with a more stable funding source for that program, because we we shifted that to a competitive grant program in 19. we, we shifted that to a competitive grant program in 1996, 1999, as a stopgap measure, because we lost state transportation funding, and then we never, we never found stable funding for it. So, the stopgap is 25 years and going. We also just looked at the, the planning horizon for our regional transportation plan for the next 25 years, so the 2050 regional plan, because we have 79 different projects we anticipate completing in the next 25 years, and TRPC has to plan for all of that time and all of those projects and figure out a way to fund them. So, it was a great discussion about our future. Next report, the Board of Health met on December 10th, and we passed a Declaration on Social Isolation and Loneliness as a Public Health Crisis. So, we've talked about this here at Council before, but our Board of Health is taking the step of actually declaring a public health crisis. I'll share a couple of quick statistics. So, chronic loneliness and social isolation can increase the risk of developing dementia by nearly 50% in older adults. Nearly 65% of parents and guardians are classified as lonely compared to individuals with no children, only at 55%. 79% of young adults experience loneliness at higher rates than seniors aged 66 and older at 41%. Like, none of these numbers are good, but for young adults, 79% of them are considered, you know, lonely. 63% of individuals who earn less than $50,000 a year are lonelier than folks with higher incomes. So, there's a lot of evidence that shows that Americans lack adequate social connection in one or more ways. Post-pandemic studies share an alarming rate of loneliness among individuals in the U.S. So, Thurston County Board of Health is taking the step of declaring this a crisis and urging that stakeholders, community organizations, and residents work to improve social and emotional connections and, you know, educate people, talk about the detrimental health consequences of loneliness and isolation, and that we, we work to improve connection in our communities. So, I can send out the link to that declaration and the report. We also issued a declaration on National Family Caregivers Month. In 2022, there was a study in Thurston County that showed that 20% of residents had provided regular care or assistance in the past 30 days to a friend or family member who had a health problem or a disability, and of those caregivers, 64% had provided care for six months or more. Like, I've provided care for a family member in the last six months. You know, a lot of us are impacted by this, either our direct family or people that we know, and it's really hard, right? It's.
I'm so sorry.
It's very exciting.
Not supposed to do that.
But it's just, it's another one of those things that we don't talk enough about, that creates a lot of stress and hardship for families, and we need to make sure that people who are providing care for others are also taking care of themselves. Finally, we talked a little bit about the recommendation to change the Board of Health composition. So, right now, I'm the city representative, although my term has ended. So, this is it for me, my last Board of Health report out for all of you. It's Olympia's turn, and they'll be appointing someone, I think, today to serve starting next year. But there's a, a recommendation that the Board of County Commissioners is considering that would change the constitution of the Board to have 10 members, which would be shrinking it down. It would have four community members, three commissioners instead of five, and two rotating city officials, that would include both North County and South County representation, and maintaining the tribal representative. So, we might see representation from South County coming onto the Board of Health as well. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunning.
I do not have anything to report, but I will piggyback on something Raffin just said about home healthcare for people. I don't know if you guys know, but the Senate and the House just passed a Veterans Bill expanding veterans' benefits to include people and family members providing service for veterans with disabilities, so that just needs to be signed for president and will be expanding services for, for people who need it.
Thank you. So, we've reached, oh.
Quick announcement?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to take one, a quick second to thank Commissioner Edwards. Several of us attended his, his retirement party this, this afternoon before Council, and I just wanted to take a second to thank him. Gary served as the county sheriff for five terms, so 20 years, and then also did two, two terms as a county commissioner, so eight years, so I just wanted to thank him for his service to this community.
Thank you for that. You, you stole my thunder, but it also brings up something I want to talk about with the, with Council, and I've had this conversation with our city manager, and as you noticed today, under Other Business, we had an item, and we hardly ever have items under Other Business, but what we're, what we're thinking about doing, and, you know, through, through conversations, is, is we don't really have a spot in our agenda for the Council, sort of to bring up, you know, items they want to discuss, things that are going on that's outside their committee reports, for, for example, Commissioner Edwards' retirement. And so, we've always sort of been a little informal, I mean, can we kind of throw it in at committee reports, but I think we're going to start using this other business. Something we'll talk a little bit more about next year is, is where is the appropriate spot to have these conversations instead of just sort of being out there and, because, you know, we have to record this, and it's not easy to do that for our clerk, so maybe we have an assigned spot where we do it.
Yeah, and as the Council calls me, work, the work session format, you know, even the work session have a role for Other Business, and I think this is going to be a topic a little bit at our retreat, is how to not only bring things up, not related to your committee reports, but also new issues or things that the Council would like to throw out there, a council member would like to throw out there to see if there's some consideration to talk about further. And so, we can talk about the parameters of this at the retreat, we want to try to identify a spot where this could happen, an agenda that we can track and, and keep a record of.
And with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. This is our last meeting for 2024, so we will be off the next couple weeks. And so, wow, I just, it's amazing how this year just went by. It's been a, obviously, a very eventful year for myself, you know, at the beginning of the year. I thought my year was going to go a lot different than it, it turned out, which just makes you appreciate every day you have a little bit better, and appreciate our community. We have an amazing community, all the outstanding public servants that we have here at Lacey, all the directors, all the volunteers, our planning commission, all of our committees, and people like Ruth, who's been doing it forever and ever and ever. And every time I see Ruth, you just make my heart warm, so I just wanted to say thank you for all your years of dedication to the City of Lacey, and I hope everyone has happy holidays and a safe new year, and we'll see you on the other side. And so, without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned, and as always, you keep it classy, Lacey.